Online folks. Ready? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Commissioners Meeting for August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Like to start by everybody, if you're able to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. A moment of silence, please, for all of our fallen service members and all of our members in the fire EMS and first responder service, please. Thank you. Just so everyone knows, Commissioner Stoddard is online, joining us via Zoom.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Brian?
Yes, sir, we can. Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you go ahead and clear.
Excellent. Attendance, we'll get a sheet of paper going around for attendance. Thank you. All right, approval of prior mini-meeting minutes from June eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I've reviewed the Commission meeting minutes. I see no additions, corrections, deletions. I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public participation, so there's twice in our meeting for public participation, one is now, and one will be at the end of the meeting. I'd just like to remind everybody to no personal attacks on anybody. And we'd love to hear what you have to say. I love seeing this room full of people tonight. And if anybody would like to speak for the first time, just please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Would anyone like to speak in public participation for the first time? Nobody right now? Okay, we'll move on. Communications, monthly reports?
Monthly reports. I have a monthly report from Fire Chief Jeff Traumer for the July, for July's monthly meet. Yes.
Fire response.
Yep. Everything looks good.
Busy month of July?
Very busy. A hundred and two total calls for the month of July.
And was one other one, right?
I also have training report from Chief Robert Regina. And everything looks they're spot on. I know that they did have a cancellation back on or it's going to be this, the twentieth, sorry, multi-company day drill was canceled. And other than that.
Just, I just want to make note of the training that a hundred and eighty-eight attendees and four hundred and thirty point five hours of training. And that was for the month of July. Unbelievable. Thank you, guys.
Is that all the communications?
That is, um, no, that was just monthly reports, Commissioner.
Okay.
The, um, moving on to the next communications was, um, I'll take this one. I sent a memo to the town councilors just to advise them what the rules and regulations of the Newington Fire Department are concerning our disciplinary procedures. And, um, they received that on August fifteenth. And so they, they now know what our process is, and if anyone comes to them, they are, um, they will make sure that we're aware of it. Okay? That's it for communications, Commissioner Stoddard.
I make a motion, we accept communications as presented.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ledger status. Um, I went through it. Uh, the only thing I'm questioning is, uh, Jeff, maybe you can help me out on this, uh, one oh two thirty-one, one oh three, part-time. We use fifty percent of that.
Uh, so the reason for that is, is the, uh, fire watch at, uh, Meadow Commons is being paid out of our budget, but it will be reimbursed from the town.
Okay.
We take it out of our part-time budget, but it actually gets reimbursed, uh, through the, um, property developer, uh, who's going to be paying the fire.
Okay.
It's just, uh, it's an exchange of monies at this point.
Okay, because I'm like, we're a month into the budget and we're fifty percent. Fifty percent gone.
That was the way that the Finance Department wanted to do it.
Okay.
What it's gonna do is come onto our budget and then it will be transferred right back.
It'll backfill.
Yep, and in fact, DJ is taking care of the, uh, building part on the fire lots that come back for us.
Excellent. That was the only question I had.
Yeah, I looked it over and, uh, that was obviously the glaring
Yes.
thing that I
It was, it was glaring, that's for sure. Okay, anything else on that, Commissioner Stoddard? Anything on the ledger status?
No, having not seen it, I won't be voting on it.
Okay, so, uh, we have
Make a motion to accept the ledger status.
And I'll, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number eight. Radio system update.
So we've been having, uh, weekly meetings, actually, sometimes twice a week, uh, between the radio project and the SDI project, which is the Personal Accountability System setting it up and so forth. We're still moving along. Radio equipment is supposed to be here now. The tentative date is October of this year.
Wow.
Um, and again, that's tentative. They're hoping to get it in sooner. Um, unfortunately, it's, right now with supply and demand, it's, whenever it's coming in, it's coming in. So it's coming in in, you know, little bits and pieces, but, uh, it's moving ahead. Um, I actually have a meeting with the Town Manager on Wednesday, uh, of next week with Freddie Callahan to discuss the Callahan Tower. Um, hopefully we'll get some progress with that, but, uh, everything seems to be moving right along.
Excellent. That, that's a lot better news than what we heard in June.
Absolutely.
Uh, truck two update. Who wants to take that one?
I'll take that one again. Truck two is basically, uh, it's on the line. Guys are qualified on it, uh, pretty much it's, uh, it's up and running and everybody seems to be enjoying it, so, um, kudos to Company Two for taking care of, uh, getting their guys qualified and and the guys working hard on getting that.
Can we take that off of old business moving forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, gray update. Chief Lapierre.
We've been through the zoning approval and it was voted on last week at the Town Council for a final approval. I did send out, um, at the request of the chief today, I contacted the town engineer just to make sure we don't have to do anything with the state on the location. I haven't heard back from him yet, but I also emailed Joel from Sign Pro or past science, excuse me. Let him run through all the processes and gotten clearance, so what his next steps need to be, uh, let us know so that we could get the electrical run to where he needs it run. So we're gonna have to start putting those pieces together.
Right.
So as soon as I hear something, the chief will know about it.
Excellent. Just for the people in the room that don't know, we, um, the Fire Department applied for a safer grant through the federal government and we were awarded forty-five thousand, I believe forty-five or forty-seven, forty-five.
Forty-five nine or something.
It's almost forty-six thousand dollars in, uh, monies, um, for recruitment and retention. And what we're gonna do with this money is put a digital sign out in front of the firehouse similar to what's at the high school. And, uh, it'll be used for recruitment and retention, and it'll also be used to warn the public of any disaster, emergency, parking ban, what have you. Um, so it's gonna be really great to see that out, outside the firehouse. I know I've been wanting that for a long, long time and it'll, it'll be coming out there soon, so, good work, chief, thanks. Any other grant?
We have the thermal imager grant's been submitted. I have a, uh, phone call into Sonia to see about this year's opportunities, what's out there that would fit our needs. Uh, if we don't, um, if we're not successful with the CIP requests or either, um, of the projects that we're gonna move forward with for that, for the ARPA Fund Awards. Uh, then we'll, you know, the chiefs will decide which one they want to go for for the AMG brand.
Okay, good. And we're still working on the drunk rant? Or is that?
Drunk rant, I haven't heard anything with.
Nothing. All right.
I did reach out when I went. I did go to Sam's and was able to secure some water. And I did ask and they hadn't heard anything from their corporate, so.
All right, great.
Just, uh, one last thing on the grants, commissioners. Uh, we actually had John Larson here the other day, uh, wanting to do a photo op in our press release uh, here in front of headquarters, uh, so for all of you that did not see that, uh, I sent it out to the department and, uh, I appreciate it. Um, Chief Lapierre, Chief Regina, and Commissioner the mayor being here. Uh, but Gary Turco and John Larson, we're both here doing a photo op with a uh, large check, uh, just to show that we got that grant, so.
Awesome, awesome.
Publicity for the department.
Tonight, someone from Washington comes and, uh, supports the Fire Department. Um, Congressman Larson. All right, um, Company Four Firehouse and Space Needs, um, I'll talk about this one a little bit. Uh, we are, um, we have talked to, um, the Town Council and through the Project Building Committee that, uh, the town set up, uh, it's, it's gonna take baby steps. Uh, we started the process, the, the Town Council's aware of it. And, and it's gonna be baby steps, but, um, I just want to make sure that anybody that saw the post today, that that did not come from the Fire Department. Um, we are in no way want to take any of your kids' parks, playgrounds, or open space to put our firehouse on. So that was one individual himself speaking for himself. So please don't think that was anything that came out from the Fire Department. So that's about it on that. Um, Chief Regina, updates of tablets, transmission, uh, transition to Alpine software for department.
Where do you want to start?
So, well, whatever the good news is.
Um, so we originally got it called over in July, that was our intent, IT, um, chief, then, uh, IT director, we made a decision to, they're behind it, weren't able to get everything ready for us, uh, but we are able to use the system. We are, we, uh, the thumbprint fingerprint recognition works well, we're using it for training, we're using it for checking in on calls. Um, I am currently testing an MDT right now that will be rolled out to the officers and, um, I just got a second revision of it, um, last night or probably this morning, actually. And we're testing that device right now, going through some things, we're making changes as we go. Um, on the personnel side of it, um, Zach and, um, Martin will all have been updating the records regularly there. So personnel records are pretty up to date. Um, Austin has stepped up and is doing all of the, uh, truck locations, we're taking the inventory, we're adding those all into the the system. It, it's a constant, things are showing up, uh, there's little things somebody will mention, we'll fix it, we'll make some changes throughout the system. Um, but overall, pretty happy with where we are. We do have a dedicated person, um, from Alpine that meets with me every Monday. Um, and, um, any problems, any issues, they work through it, there, there's a new upgrade to the system, they're gonna roll it out. We're gonna just keep going.
Excellent, good, but it seems like good news.
Yeah.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, who's gonna take the autism fundraising? Chief Stegmeier. Chief, Chief Stegmeier?
Meeting, event, events, the truck has been requested, promised in, um, state convention, they registered for it, but they specifically reached out to Captain Kirk and, uh,
Captain Kirk.
And, uh, so I guess we didn't register for it.
I don't see any information on that.
But yeah, they were, they were requesting specifically, um, um, Daniel requested the truck for the twenty-sixth, not only for town coverage, but they possibly wanted that their wood festival. Um, so we have touched a truck coming up, we have well, we reached out to Berlin for a autism event in Berlin. We've been, so, I've been off the department, so, we're not short of events, that's for sure.
That's good. Well, I know in my, uh, travels throughout the state with my work and if I have my fire shirt on, somebody will come up to me and say, hey, you're the guys with that blue, cool, awesome autism truck. So the word's gotten out, so, thank you. Um, one thing I want to add with the, um, okay of the other two commissioners, um, it wasn't an underoled business that we brought up last month was, um, uh, the chief's letter for the cars for the, uh, ARPA funds. Do you guys mind if we, no, I have a motion?
No, I'll make a motion that we added to the agenda.
Thank you, second it. I, I can second, but hold on, because.
Commissioners, uh, actually, uh, after speaking with the Town Manager, I think it's probably in our best interest at this point, I'll hold off on the ARPA uh, letter about the cars.
Okay.
Uh, to request those. I think there's other more important things to worry about, uh, we as chiefs discussed, and we feel are more important than the vehicles for us at this point.
All right.
Uh, we'll go through the regular process, um, I, I just don't think the climate is good for trying to get vehicles for ourselves. Um, there's many other important things that we felt are better for the department at this time.
All right, we'll take care of it.
I'm gonna hold off on that letter, uh, if that's okay with the street.
Oh, that's okay.
So I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that's it for old business unless either you commissioners
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. Um, new business, uh, Deputy Chief Jack Nescalata's resignation. Um, we received the resignation from, uh, Deputy Chief Nescalata, uh, we wish him well. Um, he had about twenty-something years of dedicated service to the Newington Fire Department and, and we wish him all the best. All right, posting and testing, uh, for the open deputy chief's position. I think that's why some of these guys are here. So I have a copy of the posting, let me just find it here, I got it right now. There it is. So in October, well, for a good part of last year, we had a committee working on the rules and regulations of the department. In October-November timeframe, this commission, these three current members voted on the new rules and regulations. In those rules and regulations, there was specific requirements for any deputy chief job vacancy. And I, I'll, I'll read, I'll read them as per, they're in there. They must have ten years of active service in the Newington Fire Department. Must be Fire Officer One certified. Must have served one full term as a company line captain. And must be a current member of the Newington Fire Department in good standing in accordance with NFT rules and regulations, performance measurement plan, and a, and a current town of Newington resident. So I would like to post this position. Um, chiefs, what do you think? Of the requirements, or commissioners, what do you think?
I have no, no issues with the way that the, uh, rules and regulations came out last year and the, the minor change that you made. Um, we as commissioners, um, wholeheartedly agreed that we would look at, uh, the qualified candidates according to the qualifications that are listed.
Commissioner Stoddard?
Yes, sir.
Um, are you good with following the rules and regulations that we adopted in twenty-two? Or before this is posted, does this commission want to make any changes to this posting?
Okay, the only question I have is what does it say about being a company captain?
It says that they must have completed, uh, must have cert, I'll read pervatum, must have served one full term as a company captain, per the adopted twenty-twenty-two rules and regulations.
I would consider that, um, we should change that language to say that they must have served as a company captain and not necessarily one full term.
Okay. Chief Stegmeier?
If you're gonna do that, then you need to make an exception to the certification as well, that if somebody only have fire harder two, that'd be a minimum requirement, that they have to get fire officer one destructive one this certain amount of time.
Okay, so, so, so how does this sound? About under, um, how would this sound? Must be Fire Officer One certified or must obtain certification within a reasonable timeframe? Would that suffice? That is fast practice. We have done that for chiefs in the past where we have given them a certain timeframe. It's difficult to put, say, a year on that because we don't know what the scheduling at the Fire Academy is. So, you know, a year and a half, year, year and a half, uh, I, I would consider that reasonable.
I could go along with that, but, Brian.
Okay, so if the commission, one of you commissioners would like to make a motion to change those two things and, uh, we can vote on it.
I will make a motion that we change the language, um, to reflect what we have just discussed in terms of qualifications and in regards to, uh, the company captain's position. And also the, um, timeframe to, uh, obtain Fire Officer One in a reasonable amount of time. Okay, so it will sound
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So what we'll put down is must be Fire Officer One certified or must obtain certification within a reasonable timeframe and must have served as a company line lieutenant as per adopted twenty-two. Uh, I'm sorry, um, thank you, must, uh, must have served as company line captain as per adopted twenty, well, we're gonna have to take that out because that's not in there.
Right.
But just, uh, must have served as a company line captain.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion on that issue?
I don't believe so, not on my part.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, I will make those changes and, um, for informational purposes, this will be posted tomorrow in your firehouses. So, and all the information will be on this so that, uh, you can get your resumes in. Okay, great, perfect, moving on. Company two, new truck two wet down.
Uh, there was a meeting requested to have a meeting about the wet down. There is a tentative date set, I believe it is September ninth.
Right.
Um, I don't have the particulars on it a hundred percent yet, um, and there's a meeting, I believe, next Tuesday, we had scheduled for it. But, uh, or I think it was twenty second, twenty second, I'm sorry, twenty second was the date it's scheduled for, so.
Okay, so September ninth tentatively set and more information to follow. Okay, thank you.
Uh, under new business, you might as well put in there, we'll be doing the nine eleven ceremony as usual. Um, same times as, and more to follow on that also.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Was there a timeframe on the company two wet down?
No, I, I believe it was, uh, twelve to three, three P M, was I believe the time. But it's not confirmed in a hundred percent yet, so, back to change.
Okay.
Okay. And nine eleven. All right, and that, um, brings us to, uh, item number ten, public participation. If anyone would like to speak about any, uh, thing they got on their mind, uh, please raise your hand, we'll call on you and, uh, hear what you have to say. Chief Traumber, that's Chief Traumber.
Number one is, what's this complaint memo in the, uh, order, is that the letter you, uh, wrote?
That is a letter that I wrote that was sent to the Town Councilors.
Why is this happening?
Um, this is happening, okay, so chief, just, just so you know, also that letter went out to all, worded differently, obviously, for our membership. Um, but it was sent out because, um, individuals are taking, um, different items of interest from the Fire Department and bringing it directly to Town Council members and bypassing the Fire Department. So we just want to make sure that
I understand.
they are aware of that.
Understood. Why are they doing it? And if they get caught, what's being done about it?
I can't tell you why they're doing it?
Years ago, we had the same problem. We put a squash to it. And from what I'm hearing on this, the, the chain of command here, it's been hushed. Been great. I give my, uh, credit to the chief and all the deputies for doing an excellent job. I listen to the radio all the time. Professional. This first, this should be stopped.
And that's why the letter was sent, chief.
Okay, and hopefully it's
Hopefully it will. And the letter was also sent to all individual members of the Fire Department that have an email. There's also supposed to be a posting in the firehouse, but they should post it in the firehouse for them to read.
The, uh,
And, and, and chief, if I can interrupt for a minute, that letter was sent to the Town Councilors and the mayor and the Town Manager, so they understand the communication process and if they do get any, um, anybody contacting them, they should get back to the leadership of the Fire Department, mainly the chief.
So it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
We agree.
Last few years, I've seen a change in this department for the better. The chiefs are working their ass off, plain English. The membership should be coming up to them and saying, nice job, instead of doing this backyard fight. Try walking up to the chief someday and saying, hey, nice job, chief. How many times did that happen the last year? Probably none. Laffey, uh, Chief Lapierre, all the words he got. Chief Regina. Who's that other guy?
They should be, uh, and
It hasn't happened in a few years, now it's happening. It hasn't happened in a few years, now it's happening. This chain of command has been loose for a while and now it's coming tight. And from what I see. It's across the board discipline. It's not favor here, favor there, favor there. It's across the board. You screw up. You get this, when you screw up, you get this one. The way it should be.
Can't agree with you more.
Can't agree more, chief, thank you.
Just wanna say thank you for the chief's guy. All the chiefs, the way they handle themselves.
I would just like to add to that, chief. Um. Uh, I'd like to thank every member in this department.
That goes without saying.
Goes without saying. Because there's a lot of hard work put into this, in this organization, and you know, we consider it a family. And I always close every month with my. Thanking the family of the Newington Fire Department and um. It is, it's a hundred plus something. Family. We all look out for everybody's kids. And each other. And tha- that's how I want it. Anything else, chief? Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mister James Sandy.
Can I have an explanation um from the? Commissioners, please, as to. You said it out of your own mouth that a committee worked tirelessly on changing the rules and regulations to make them best for this department. The board had agreed to those rules and regulations as written and stipulated. Now you have a new position for deputy chief coming up. You're changing those rules that you just agreed on. It sounds like you're going back to the old ways of changing. Those requirements. To fit specific people. You have more than enough qualified candidates. As the rules are written there, why change those now? There's no explanation for it unless you're looking for somebody specific.
I, I can tell you right now, I'm not looking for anybody specific, uh the way that the testing process is gonna be conducted. Um, the commissioners are gonna get, the commissioners and the chief. Are gonna get numbers from a outside testing agency, the Canker Fire Academy. So, the numbers are the numbers.
Well, I'm well aware of that. I'm well aware of that testing process.
By, by change, by.
In a whole bunch of other.
By, by changing this. By changing this, we're opening up the pool a little bit. Um, so that we can have more members. Take the test, get the experience of taking the test. This doesn't come around a lot. A deputy chief's position, and this will give members the opportunity to take this test. And possibly. Remember it for the next time a deputy chief position comes open.
Okay, I understand that. You just approved those rules as they were written last year by that committee that worked very hard to do that. You had no problem voting and approving them then, why change them tonight?
Um, because.
At least five that I'm aware of that met all of those qualifications there.
Um, because it went to a vote of the commissioners and um. As far as I'm concerned, the vote is the vote, and that's what we went with.
Well, you understand, I was just looking for an explanation.
Yeah, Eric, we want, we wanted to open this up to. The department. And hopefully, we will get a great response, and here again, I understand. Where you're coming from. My understanding is that the same thing happened with the last deputy chief's. Position because it was an interim. Happening. And we wanted to. Basically maintain that same. System. And we knew that that had, that language had to be changed a little bit. After it was, you know, here again.
So in other words, in other words, Frank, we, we overlooked that in the. When we did the rules and regs last year, we didn't realize that we were setting a standard and we'd like to be more. Inclusive than exclusive, and that's the reason for the change tonight.
Thank you, Kent, that's the word I was looking for.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Johnny.
Yeah, Montel, help me one. You know, everybody knows I'm a rules and regs guy. I said a long time ago, because the chiefs are in the positions for a very long time, it gives very little movement for a captain or lieutenant to move up. And I've always wanted to do two terms of lieutenant in your own. Because if you have a good captain, you can have just as good as a lieutenant, but then one captain always stays there, and a lieutenant can't move up. So I always try to have a game for two terms. My other issue is, again, you said you just re- reviewed these, it took almost a year for that. Now all of a sudden it seems like, well, the commissioner, we don't like this, let's just change it tonight, everybody, I, I, it's changed. So is that gonna be a permanent change or is it just a temporary, just a piece? More people. Or at least put out there who can apply at the current standard? And then if you run a large pool.
I think.
Seems like you just, I don't like it, let's change it right now, we're done.
I think what we'll have to do is to have the committee. Go back and um take a look at that. Language under that section. And possibly, and possibly tweak it a little bit, but I know that the committee does have to go back. Because we have to redo the um. We have to redo the P M P, so they are definitely gonna re- be revisiting the rules and regulations. But for this test, the, the commissioners voted to uh. Open it up to a few more individuals to. Give them the experience of taking this test. And um, you know, helping them down the road, so. Right now, this is just for this one test. This is just for this one test.
We can't leave, we can't leave the deputy chief's position open ended. That position, but that's, right now, that is the only way that we can, that's the only way that we can circumvent the system, John. Nothing is perfect. You know, we're. We make mistakes just like anybody else, but if we don't make that change now. We're gonna suffer some consequences down the road. So we have to have that flexibility to be able to do this.
I wasn't sure if there was a.
Johnny, I.
Situation on how to change rules and regs, whether you just can't put it away.
Um, I did wanna bring something to your attention because I know you're always uh always advocating for this. Um, but I just wanna read a little bit more of the posting, Johnny, um, there will be a probationary period for one year. After the initial appointment of the deputy chief. The deputy chief's appointment will be for a period of five years. The deputy chief will be reviewed by the fire chief and the board of fire commissioners every second and fourth year of his or her appointment term. At the end of the fifth year, the fire chief and the board of the commissioners. Will conduct a performance evaluation and survey the membership regarding their term. Regarding another term.
Your term has been here for probably twenty years now.
I don't believe that's been in there for twenty years, but. It's been in there for a little while, but it hasn't, I don't think it's twenty. So I know. I know, we do reviews of the chiefs every year. And I think they can all tell you that we do it. And for. It, it, it's not a gravy train once the chief chiefs get it, get in into their position. They're scrutinized. By the department and the commissioners every year.
And John, that was with a different chief and a different commission.
But if it was in the rules and regs, it doesn't matter who's chief.
Anything else, John?
Well, why I'm bringing things up, my company four. You know, it said it has to be rebuilt. Why can't you use the same land? We build custom app racks. So if the building's not big enough for the bigger ones we have now, why can't you just cut it back a little bit? And it'll fit in firehouse.
What, what we? That, that's all in the planning stages right now, we're trying to keep that. Same parcel of land and build a new firehouse. On the existing parcel of land for station four. Like I said, this was an individual that went off on his own. And. Nowhere has this commission or the chiefs of this department. Said that we are gonna take over a park to build a firehouse. None of us had said that. That was one individual firefighter on his own. Just to make sure that's clear.
Just to reiterate on that, um, we did send it, when we sent it to the town. We actually said renovation slash replacement, so we did not specifically say one or the other. We were gonna get, obviously, the building committee involved and come up with a decision on what fits best. You're a hundred percent correct, we could buy a smaller apparatus. The problem is, the apparatus that we currently sit today. Will not fit in that firehouse, except for the one that. Correct, so there is other options, the problem is coming forward this long part. And it hasn't been touched since this uh.
Fifty.
Nineteen, yeah.
So there's definitely a need to do something there.
Yeah.
But when we did send it to the town, we put a recommendation for one for the other.
Right. Okay, thank you, John. Anybody else like to comment? Joe Bobo.
Two small technical things. Um, your little patch up here, your corner of your, your uh paperwork.
Yes, sir.
Is nineteen twenty nine there because of that's when the commissioners were performing? Or somebody just not put that back to the nineteen?
I don't think it's ever been changed.
All other paperwork has nineteen seventeen, our patch has seventeen, just.
We will make sure we take care of that. Thank you.
And my other thing is. Yeah. Chief Nusad's resignation.
Yes, sir.
Was that a verbal thing to you guys, or was that?
No, we have the, the, uh, we have a written. We have a written one.
News, why wasn't it listed under commissions, uh, communications?
Um, because uh deputy chief Nescolat's resignation was uh put under new business, we do not, that, that probably went in his personnel file, we don't have. His handwritten resignation. His typed resignation. We can get it and we can supply it to you for next commissioner meeting, if you would like.
Because the communication, the communication, if you guys got communication.
You're correct, you're correct. You're correct. Um, but we did not get a report from that end of the chief, so. That's probably where it is, so.
Oh, so the commissioners never got a resignation letter?
The commissioners were informed. That he resigned from the department.
Okay, so he didn't send one to the commissioner, he just sent it to the chief or.
Correct, correct. Yes, sir.
Well, going by the old list, you guys are going to sort back to the old.
Um, cuz that um. That list is over two years old. Um, so that list, it, it, it's expired. For a deputy chief's position? Yeah. And there's been, and Sal, you know, there's been a lot of changes with, with, you know, personnel, other people. You know, stepping up and. So, we felt it best to uh just give a new test. Yes, John.
Well, by that again, you, I think you should put that rules and regs, how long that list is for? Because this year you're saying two.
That's a determination in the commission.
Next year you say, well, we're only gonna make it one year and.
That's a determination of the commission.
Proactive commission.
Anybody else would like to speak? I O.
Uh, all I have to say is being in the department for eight years, um, I think chief and deputy chief, they went to reach out, they didn't apply integrity. And um. Also, I add my company three to my officers and my, you know. I used to say two things about it and uh. And I have been. Had a. The company team. And a bed, I'm a little bit placed, I'm next, and I, I just want to put my.
Thank you. And I think I can remember the day you walked in the firehouse, is that not right, I O? Huh? And we sat down and talked. And look at eight years later. Thank you, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Kurt Rosman.
I'd be back with I O, uh, despite all of the shortfalls and disappointments we've had. With radios, the computers. I gotta commend, you know, this whole team here for keeping their heads up and. Making do, Nico is, you give Nico a call, he's on it. Uh. Check with the chiefs and, you know, they showed no frustration, but optimism, optimism that these things will. You know, come to nature and we'll be up and running for this, so. My hat's off to all you guys.
Thank you, Kurt. Anybody else like to speak? Chris, Chris, Chris Ferry.
Want to comment on, is there any word on Chapman Street, old company three firehouse?
Haven't heard anything, Chris, on that.
Comment on that, it's, it's sad that that building is just deteriorating. I don't have to put any money into it, um, it's an opportunity for us to have a decent storage area. And I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but you know, it's just, every day it goes by, it gets worse over there.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a.
It could possibly be historic, so we're not sure yet, but uh.
So Chris, just to figure back on that, uh, there is funding that was put in by the town council to do work on that. Uh, we were gonna go into a renovation slash do something with it. But then the historic thing popped up, and now it's back at the town building committee, and until they form this complete building committee. They won't move on any projects in town unfortunately. Um, I, I kind of, uh, I think there, there has to be five, eight, eleven committees, eleven seconds. And then those projects, uh, when we sent that letter to the town. Company fours was in there and company threes was in there. Uh, and our priority is what we need, what we think we need, and so forth. So that was all submitted to the town uh six months ago.
Yeah.
Um, and broke it all down. Chapman Street was there. Um, there is, there's holes in the roof, there is all kinds of stuff over there. I know there's funding available, but they didn't wanna move on it until. It was a concrete decision, but.
Thank you. Chief Regina.
Um, just a couple of comments, um. Uh, first one was, uh, with chief primary permission, um, the training division is going to. Um, open up a. Uh, opportunity for everyone in the department to go through a session of. Uh, interviews with some outside chiefs. Um, as part of a preparation for. Any type of about, you know, promotional testing lieutenant, deputy chief, whatever happens to it, we're hoping to get this in place. Well, well ahead of the team ones, so that if someone's unfamiliar with that, haven't done one. Um, and we're gonna make it part of a regular training process, so our guys and women do not walk into. Uh, a situation that they've never had that opportunity in this effort, so. I brings out to a couple of area chiefs, uh, a couple of people that were in our department at one time. Um, that will sit across the table, it will be informal, but we are gonna request. Class at uniform, and a few other things to prep them. We started last night with our new camp officer candidate training. Uh, spent some time going over some of the things that you would. Possibly ask, what did you do to prepare for the? This, this job, those types of questions and things, and so we're gonna make that a regular part of our training. The other thing was just a, a comment, um, there's been a lot of. Uh, negative things about the department, but. Um, it's usually, it seems like it's the same. Group, and you know, I always remember, you know, my mother said it, I'm sure others have heard, you know, you've got nothing good to say, don't say it at all. And as simple as that comment was, it's something my mother had said to me when I was younger, and. This is a family, I've heard you say this a million times. If you have a problem with your family, if you're gonna cut them off. And not talk to them for the rest of your life. Then shame on you for going in that direction. But if you're also gonna sit here and try to look at what this department has done. And you be jealous because of the things that this chief has accomplished during his tenure. The things that have happened outside, they, you spoke about it tonight, the autism truck. The uh, the, the T shirts and things on a regular basis, Wednesday nights. Kirk and company are out there selling T shirts. The old firehouse stable again, the department ink is back in business again. Um, you, the training division, the things that we've had, the grants, you know, you can just, there's a list. A mile long, they have, and what you hear from the uh. People and what you hear from other departments is, oh shit, don't show up at our parade with your guys because you're gonna make us look like idiots. Or they're gonna say, well, look what Newington's doing, look at the report from Weathersfield, how quickly everybody forgets about these things that said. To Weathersfield, you need to do what Newington does, you need to do it listed item after item. And after a while, all of a sudden people start to start chipping away at this stuff to make it sound like we're such a bad. Department, you're nuts. You couldn't have, and I heard Chief Trauer. Senior say this before, you can't have a better department than what we currently have today. We're working hard to make these things happen, and the people, the members of this department that are involved in. We're working hard to make these things happen and the people, the members of this department that are involved in this stuff, realize how hard they're working themselves. And how involved they've been over the years to do it, so why anybody? In this department would have anything negative to say without bringing it up through chain of command is nuts. Any my comments, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mike Kazanelli.
I'm not even a town resident, but I've been around this place since I was about fifteen. And having been a member here and two other departments and several EMS departments, this place is the best firehouse, not, not just this. The entire mountain. This is the best department in the entire area and I'm convinced of that, you guys are my family. The bickering is gonna go on forever, and I think Ray DeMarco was the one that told me when I went to college, go to college, when you come home, everything's gonna be the same. You'll have a few different faces, those that are gonna complain are gonna complain, those that are gonna have your back will have your back. You guys are family, I would do anything for any of you guys.
We even used to pick you up off your moat bed when you dropped it.
I can't believe I'm saying this, under your leadership of the, uh.
Let him speak, let him speak.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Probably guys, and you probably.
It's not just one person, Mike, it's, it's like I said before, it's the family and it starts at the top with the chief. And, um, it, it goes from there.
I, I've had my opportunity over the last couple of weeks to corner some of the older folks. Uh, and thank them to your guidance when I retired a couple of weeks. To thank some of the older folks for their guidance during my teenage years when my family broke apart, I had nothing. You guys actually saved my rear end and you kept me from doing some really stupid things. And I owe you guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Well, since this is family.
The bar a little bit.
Kevin Sigler.
Yeah, um, I just wanna echo, you know, a little bit of what everybody's been saying. Uh, I've been on the department for twenty-one years now, um, I've seen the changes over the twenty-one years, not as long as everybody else, other people here. But the department is in a lot better place now than it's ever been before. Um, you know, we had our issues in the past, um, I think the whole department overcame a lot of diversity and a lot of issues. Uh, up at the chief's level, I think we are in a good spot right now, we have a lot of respect from other departments. Uh, we have support from the other departments, including some of the paid departments. We're now going mutually for West, West Hartford pretty regularly, automatically, I mean, that was never done before, right? So we got respect from the, from the career guys, um, you know, the radio system, which is a huge safety concern. I think that the chiefs are doing a phenomenal job and it doesn't go from just the chiefs, they're the leaders. But because of them doing what they're doing, everybody else is following, the officers are following the chiefs. The members are following the officers and everybody should be proud to be a member and part of the family. And if there is somebody out there that's saying something negative. I just hope, and I'm gonna say it right now, I hope it's not a political thing, because if it is, that stopped years ago as well. This department needs to move on and we need to be the best department that we can be. And if you have a problem with the chiefs, go to the chief. I, I'm sure if you went to car one and asked to go into his office, he would take you in his office and speak to you and. Um, if you wanted another chief to be there, I'm sure he would arrange that as well. But the negativity's gotta stop, um, and I just hope that we can move forward and continue in the path that we are on now.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Johnny.
One more thing, I know the chief's line officer, staff officer is a thankful position. But I personally would like to put it on record that to thank Jack and Spada for his short time as chief. You know, from what I saw, you know, you did a lot in this short period of time, I'd like to thank for his service.
Thank you, he did, he did a lot for this department. We appreciate it, it's hard work. Any, anybody else?
Uh, one more comment.
Yes.
Yeah, teacher, uh, congratulations, Commissioner Stoddard on your retirement, thank you for your fifty years.
Again?
He didn't fall asleep, did he?
No, no, I'm still awake.
Okay. You know, fifty years can do that.
You're not calling me old, are you?
No, I'm not.
Uh, comments on recent incidents that we've had over. Uh, this department has done tremendous work. Uh, first was the rescue on Cedar Lawn. Guys did a fantastic job, um, worked through some treacherous areas and got someone down safely, so kudos to you. Tree, uh, today, the guy stuck in the tree, they got him down safely, uh, that was another hairy situation. Um, the car fire over at West Auto.
Car. Cars, uh.
Ten cars, exactly.
Ten cars.
You know, the department worked flawlessly with what we had there, so, uh, kudos to every single one, everybody in this room and what you guys do. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, chief. Okay, before I close up participation, public participation, nobody else would like to? Um. Counselor Page, would you like, uh? To say anything? At our meeting?
I would just say, I would just say, um, I'm grateful to every one of you for twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, putting your lives on the line and keeping us safe. Um, we're very grateful and, and you make us proud, you make our town proud and thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Page. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? Both? Okay, counts, uh, commissioner's remark, we'll start with the fifty-year guy. How's that?
There you go, calling me old again. Um. I'm at the beach, so I'm not gonna say anything tonight, have fun, it's good to be here, I feel like I'm with the family, so thank you and I appreciate everybody's comments.
Thank you, commissioner.
Enjoy your vacation, Kent. So I guess, I guess.
You're next.
I'm, I'm next, well. When I look around, when I looked around this room, uh, this evening and, and all of the things and comments that were made about. How this department has progressed and the things that we have been through. Uh, when I look around this room, there are, there is only, uh, less than a handful of individuals. That were in this department when I served, not only as a member of company one, but also as a lieutenant and, uh. You know, back in the day, we had our problems, we had our issues, but we always seem to, we always seem to overcome them. And here again, speaking about family and everything that we do together. Um, it, it really pains me when I think about. Certain things where. You have these rumors that get started. And then nobody talks to this person and nobody talks to that person and before you know it, it becomes a large cluster. That's one of the things that has always bothered me and I know. Joe is a very good friend of mine and I remember the very first. Meeting that I came to as a veteran member of company one. And I sat in the monthly meeting and after the meeting, the first thing I said to Joe, if, do you remember?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
The only thing that changes are the dates and the names. So those are the things that, that when I became a commissioner, I tried, I vowed to hopefully. Change the culture and the culture in this department has certainly changed from what it was twenty-five, thirty, forty years ago. Uh, my hat is off to the command staff of this department, each and every one of the officers, the cadet division. Just unbelievable amount of work that goes on on a daily basis, so my hat is off to each and every one of you. Um, the firefighters in this department are top notch. And, um. Serving as a firefighter for over thirty-three years, uh, you guys have. Just killed it, just killed it, so continue the work that you do and, uh, let's start acting. A little bit more like a family that we should be. And hopefully we will overcome some of these, um, incidents that have recently occurred. Because I certainly do not want the Newton Fire Department to suffer, um, any other consequences than what we're already dealing with. So thank you all for what you do.
Ryan, before you speak, I do have one thing to add. I can't see, I can't see that well, but it looks like a very diverse group in the room.
It, Commissioner Stoddard, if you were here, you'd be surprised because our. Usual six or seven people has brought, grown to a, a great crowd tonight. Um, with not only members of our fire department, but members of our community. That don't have anything to do with our fire department. And. To me, that's very heartfelt.
Well, my, my point, my point is that, um. The chief and the chief staff is trying to diversify, the commission is too, so, uh, hats off to. Diversification and it's working.
It is working. So let's dive from my remarks, um, one thing I, I'd like to publicly like to welcome. Uh, we didn't have a meeting in July, uh, when the new town manager was appointed. I'd like to, uh, welcome Tom Hucka to the, uh, town. Um, I tried to get him here tonight, uh, uh, he was coming as a Tuesday when I talked to him. But he got tied up on some other business for tonight. Um, but what I would like to do, um, talking with him is, um, some Monday night. And I think the best would be a meeting night when everybody's feeding themselves. Um, to take him around and, uh, have him meet the guys. Have him see our houses, see the equipment and he's all for it. Um, he, he really wants to meet all you guys. Um, he told me today that he, he gives us all the support that we need to our department for what he's seen of us so far. And, uh, I just wanted to welcome him and, uh, wish him best of luck. Um, in running the town. Um. I, I don't know how much more I can say except for what, what hasn't been said tonight and, um. Being one of the old guys in the room with forty-three years. I, like I said twice tonight, I stress the family of this department. And, uh, Jimmy, Joe. Who else? Goes back ways, you Frank, when we used to have to stop with the rescue truck to pick you up to go to fire calls, uh, Main Street. One time it was snowing and I went to stop to pick you up and the rescue truck went sliding sideways right down Main Street, right by your house. Bobby, Bobby, um, we have overcome a lot in this department over my forty-three years. Um, and I'm not gonna let, let a little pothole bump in the road. Stop what? This chief and this command staff and our officers have done. These guys are out there constantly. When have you ever seen a fire truck wrapped in an autism? You know, for autism.
Don't forget the pink one.
Ten years ago, you didn't let me finish, ten years ago, we did breast ca- breast cancer and did a pink fire truck. What other fire departments do that? That's because of the love of the community, the love of each other in this room, the love of the department. So let's please keep it going that way. Let's support our chief and our officers. And, uh, we'll, we'll get, we'll get through these minor little bumps and, um, I'm gonna leave it at that. And with that. I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, I will.
Well. Well. Excuse me. I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All favors.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all.
Hold on one second, hold on, let us know when it's up. One second.